Good morning or afternoon depending on your time zone. I want to welcome everybody to our first day of our hearings in the Ninth Triennial Section 1201 Rulemaking. My name is Suzy Wilson. I'm the General Counsel at the Copyright Office. And I'm going to take us through the introductions and a little bit of the logistics for today. So we are going, these first hearings will be on Class Two. And for how we're going to run this, this will be very similar to how we did it three years ago. My government colleagues will be posing questions, specific questions for the participants. And they will call on the participants to respond. For the participants, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom to indicate that you would like to respond to a question. But if it's not working for you, feel free to just raise your physical hand and we can find you and call on you. We have a lot of topics to cover today, as you might expect, and only 90 minutes to do so for this class. We've asked that you please try to keep your responses focused to the particular question asked and keep your comments relatively brief so we can get through everything and allow all of our questions to be asked. Today's event is being livestreamed as well as recorded and transcribed by a court reporter. The video and transcript will be posted on the Copyright Office website. And we ask everyone who is speaking to please speak clearly and to mute your audience when you're not speaking to assist with both our recording and the transcription that's being done by the court reporter. And finally, I want to let everyone who is listening in to know that Thursday afternoon, we would be holding an audience participation session. You can sign up to participate in that session by using the link that will be put in the chat. We will ask that remarks be limited to about three minutes for public participation, but they can be on any of the classes that are being covered this week. Also, just a note on the chat for today. It is not set up for public interaction during the hearing today, but is a way for us to be able to put any notices out to all of you who are listening. So today's hearing is on Class Two Audiovisual Works and Online Learning. Before we begin, I would like to invite first my Copyright Office colleagues to introduce themselves.
Hello, my name is Jalise Mangum. I'm an attorney advisor in the office of the General Counsel here at the Copyright Office.
And hi, everyone. My name is Mark Gray. I'm an Assistant General Counsel here in the Office General Counsel.
We also have a colleague here from NTIA. Please go ahead and introduce yourselves.
Good afternoon, all. My name is Justice Shannon. I am a policy analyst with NTIA.
I would now like to invite the participants to introduce themselves. We will start with the proponents of the proposed exemption. Please introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Peter DeChurney. I'm a professor at the University of Pennsylvania, and I'm here representing the Joint Educators.
Now let's turn to those who are opposing the exemption, the proposed exemption. And we'll start with AAC, AACCS LA.
Hi, good morning, everybody. My name is Michael Ayers, and I'm counsel for Advanced Access Content System Licensing Administrator, LLC, also known as AACCS LA, and we provide content protection technology for the Blu-ray disc format.
Thank you. Now for the joint creators and copyright owners.
I am Steve England of Generon Block and representing in this panel, the Entertainment Software Association, the Motion Picture Association, the News Media Alliance, and the Recording Industry Association of America.
And then finally, on behalf of the DVD CCA.
Hi, I'm David Taylor. I'm counsel to DVD CCA, and we provide CSS, which is a copy protection technology for DVDs.
Great, thank you. And so to start off with the questions for Class One, I would like to turn it over to my colleague Jalise Mangum.
Thanks so much, Suzy. Again, thank you all for being here today. Again, my name is Jalise Mangum, and I will be co-moderating the hearing today. To open us up, I'd like to start with Mr. DeChurney. You are the proponent for the proposed class we're discussing today, representing the Joint Educators. The Joint Educators proposed a similar class during our last cycle, expanding the existing exemption for massive open online courses or MOOCs, as we'll refer to them today, related to online learning and audiovisual works. Last cycle, the Register found that the record lacked support to expand the exemption to for-profit and/or unaccredited educational companies and organizations. Briefly, can you state to what extent your current proposed exemption is different from the proposal you submitted in 2021?
Yes, thank you for the question. So as you know, since 2006, the Copyright Office has continued to expand exemptions for educational use, really transforming the way that media can be used in teaching in a broad range of ways. That was eventually expanded to MOOCs, online education for accredited nonprofit institutions. What happened, I think unintentionally, is that there became a kind of divide between traditional learners who tend to be learning through institutions that are nonprofit accredited institutions and non-traditional learners, learning through a whole range of innovative platforms that are sometimes for-profit, sometimes unaccredited. A number of things have changed. I mean, one is that the market for that kind of education continues to grow. The service that these providers offer to non-traditional learners has continued to grow. They've been really important in closing the educational divide. I think one big change in our proposed exemption is what we have actually building on with the NTIA wrote in response to the last triennial rulemaking response to try to find a way to really narrow the class in a very solid way. So just to reiterate what's in the comment, it's a very limited exemption, and it aims to create a nondiscriminatory class limited by engagement with state and federal bodies. So again, we use the NTIA's definition from the last rulemaking. The exemption would be limited to qualified online educational entities. That's those entities registered with state and federal government bodies that have an educational mission. We've given a number of examples. You know, others, they seem to appear in different kinds of forms, but for the company two U, for example, they list their educational mission in their Form 10K as part of their 501(c)(3) registration and says, "Our mission is to expand access to high-quality education and unlock human potential." And there's the educational mission in a way that is confirmed and verified by a state or federal government body.
Thank you for that response, Mr. Ayers, Mr. England, and Mr. Taylor. Thank you for being here representing the opponents. As I'm sure you know, the Joint Educators revised the proposed exemption in their reply comments. And I'd like to give you an opportunity to briefly summarize your thoughts on the revised language, starting with Mr. Ayers.
Hi, thank you. Good morning. I think our position, as we've stated in our filings, is that the evidence shown doesn't, the evidence provided by the proponents doesn't really advance the ball over what was considered in the last proceeding and that the examples given in the filings in this time are actually not very supportive. They're a little on the thin side, not very supportive. We have examples of technology platforms rather than actual creators and a number of, in fact, entities that arguably don't even need the exemption because they're already working cooperatively with content creators. So I think we would look at the language and say that the changes since last time are not supported by, they weren't supported by the evidence then, and they continue to not be supported by the evidence now. And so we would recommend that those changes not be made to the existing exemption.
Thank you, Mr. Ayers. Mr. Taylor, your thoughts?
Yes, thanks for the question. I think if you're specifically referencing the changes between the initial comments and the reply, and what I had seen in the reply was that they wanted to add the standard MOOC requirement of qualified online courses requiring close analysis of film and media excerpts. I mean, I think it does make it more similar to what's already in the exemption for MOOCs. But at the same time, I don't think that that in itself is enough to improve the exemption or the proposed class because basically they haven't provided any evidence of why they need for these particular possibilities close analysis of film and media excerpts. So I don't think it really moves the ball any further.
Thank you, Mr. England. Your thoughts on the revised language?
So like Mr. Ayers and Mr. Taylor, I think that the language that was included in the reply comments really doesn't move the needle. This is an exemption that the Office has considered and denied in essentially the same form three previous times, and the Office had it exactly right. I think the first of those times in 2015, when it explained that an exemption where anybody can declare their teaching a MOOC and anybody can be a student is anathema to the exemption process. And I don't think minor changes in the wording of the regulation really changed that. One of the principal examples here that is relied upon in Professor DeChurney's comments is the service called Udemy. And I think when I first started thinking about this class, I viewed it as providing a school-like experience. After spending some time on Udemy, I think that experience is very incomplete. And Udemy is basically a platform that I now think of as akin to YouTube or TikTok, where content creators provide classes and people can go and access on-demand streams of informational content. It, Udemy isn't like a school. The content creators aren't like university professors. And the kinds of courses here are not ones that are being offered at America's colleges and universities, I don't think. So this is an important class to really appreciate the breadth of the exemption that's being offered in terms of the full range of content being offered on Udemy. Courses like How to Get Obsessed, Women Obsessed with You Even If You're Homeless, or How to Communicate with Your Animal Telepathically. And that kind of course requires a very different kind of analysis than the courses offered by accredited colleges and universities. And is just not something the Office has contained before or ought to, no matter how the regulatory language gets tweaked.
Thank you. I'll go to Mr. Taylor, and then I'll go back to Mr. DeChurney to get some clarifying information about the class.
Yes, I just want to correct the, Professor DeChurney suggested that it was unintentional. Back in 2015, we spent a significant amount of time examining who could exactly offer a MOOC. And the, almost the entire discussion was distinctions drawn very carefully around nonprofit educational entities versus for-profit entities. So it was not unintentional, something that has resulted from the changes in the marketplace, but by carefully looking at a fair use analysis and what was already in place for educational entities and exemptions.
Thank you. To Professor DeChurney, I'm sorry, I was calling you Mr. DeChurney. I'd like to confirm some things about your revised proposed exemption. The proposed exemption now applies to educators of qualified online educational entities and preparers of online learning materials acting at the direction of educators of those entities. Speaking of Udemy, how is Udemy, which appears to be an online platform for independent educators, an example of a party for whom the exemption would apply? Wouldn't the exemption only apply to the instructors themselves who, according to Udemy, retain all of the rights in their content?
Yes, so exactly. So Udemy was founded by a Stanford professor in 2011, I believe. A professor who really had a lot of facility and was considered a really exceptional math professor and wanted to take what he did at Stanford and make it more widely available to scale it. And so started creating online courses and then took the platform and opened it up to additional other educators. And so the question is about who would the exemption apply to? Would it be educators or would it be to the platforms themselves? Similar to the existing exemptions, it would be for the educators. But there is also language in the existing exemptions that allows for staff to support educators in creating the material.
Thank you. Your exemption also applies to preparers. Can you provide an example of that and state why that class of persons is important or distinct from educators?
Yes, so let me just use the example of my own course that I've used since we started talking about MOOCs. I teach a course on the history of Hollywood. It's on the platform called EdX. It's had over 80,000 learners in it. I just recently offered a smaller version of it to alumni of the University of Pennsylvania. And in creating the course, I had support from my teaching assistants who helped create content that's used in the course. So even though I am teaching the course in the same way I would teach a course on campus, there are a lot of people who support that course. It could be IT staff. It could be research assistants or teaching assistants. And those are the sorts of preparers who help create the material that goes into a course, especially in an online course. It's usually even more of a team effort where videos are created and other kinds of materials sometimes that will require a kind of technological expertise to create the online material.
Kind of, thank you. That's really helpful. Going back to Udemy, though, in terms of who the exemption is applying to, you're stating it's the educators on Udemy. Do you have data or the number of educators who are represented on Udemy, any of that information that you could provide for the record?
Yeah, I had that this morning, and I don't know where it is.
I believe we will also, we can also accept post-hearing. We can submit a post-hearing letter, and you can provide that in response.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I can provide that, the Udemy numbers specifically later.
Thank you. The only other example I believe that you provide is Khan Academy. Can you provide examples of other educators or preparers for whom the exemption would apply and those who really want to use film and media excerpts but cannot?
Yeah, so actually Khan Academy has several film courses. They employ two art historians who create and oversee, curate a lot of their humanities offerings, but specifically their art and media offerings. Those courses have, you know, really don't use clips at all. They describe the material, and sometimes we'll use still images. And so it's the often full-time educators who are on Khan Academy. Khan Academy is really kind of amazing resource that's democratized lots of types of education. They do have courses that look very similar to the kinds of courses you would find in K-12 education or universities. But they also have other kinds of supporting forms of educational content, the kind that Mr. Ayers was dismissing is not relevant to this rulemaking, but I think are also really important and very important to supplementing education. I'll give a personal example here. My daughter is currently a college student. When she decided to apply to college, we thought we would pay for a tutor to help her study for her SATs as, you know, as people do who can afford that. She then decided to first use the free tutoring for the SAT through Khan Academy. And actually, it was so successful and powerful that we ended up not having to hire a personal tutor for her. It really democratized access to educational resources and opened up the doors to higher education and does that for millions of students in a way that, you know, that was really off limits to only those, to those who couldn't afford it before. And so those are the kinds of supporting educational opportunities that are created by these and for non-traditional students by these, sometimes for-profit, sometimes unaccredited organizations.
Thank you. Turning now to your definition for qualified educational entities. The language of the revised proposed exemption defines these entities as online entities registered with their state or local jurisdiction or by federal government as an entity for-profit or nonprofit with an educational purpose or a mission. How would you define an educational purpose or a mission? How would you, how would an entity demonstrate that mission? Would it be through some sort of organizational document, securities filings, corporate charter, et cetera?
Yeah, so there are a number of ways in which these show up, sometimes through tax documents, sometimes through the establishment of the organization, either as a for-profit company or a public benefit company, or in the case of two U that we used earlier, or sorry, in the case of other places like Khan Academy through Form 990, which is used to set up a 501(c)(3). Sometimes it's through an SEC filing, like NK, my legal team tells me is the name of the document. So there are quite a few ways that these organizations are registered, both federally to set to as through their establishment, through annual tax filings or at the state level.
If I can follow up quickly on that, so I guess, you know, as we're thinking about the scope of this exemption and how we would structure it if we decided to recommend it, you know, those are a lot of different kinds of documents and places you could discern educational mission from. Like, is there some sort of standard, you know, document or test that we could put that, you know, might help, you know, for example, for the opponents to have just a little bit more clarity about how this hypothetical class would operate, just as a matter of regulatory language?
Yeah, I mean, so there are different kinds of institutions. Some are unaccredited nonprofits, some might be unaccredited for-profits. And so there are a number of different ways that they are established and would interact with different governing bodies. Most of them seem to have a stated purpose that you can find on their homepage. So, you know, Coursera is kind of bringing education to all. Two U's, as I mentioned, was, you know, their mission is to expand access to high-quality education and unlock human potential. LinkedIn Learning says that LinkedIn is helping professionals use the platform to connect, learn, grow, and get hired. And so this is, you know, generally the mission is somewhere on their website as well as in these kinds of filings.
Thank you. I want to give the opponents an opportunity to respond because I know, Mr. Taylor, specifically in your comments, you noted that Udemy didn't have an educational purpose or mission, even though one of the language that they use is to improve lives through learning. Starting with Mr. Taylor, can you describe why a language like that wouldn't demonstrate an educational purpose and respond generally to Professor DeChurney's comment?
Yeah, I think that the problem with it is that we don't understand what registered purpose means. I mean, typically, when we, in corporate terms of what an entity is doing, it's corporate documents. And to the extent that you can find it in an SEC filing, a representation, that representation can be made, but it doesn't necessarily, in my mind, as a corporate attorney, speak to the fact of whether or not its purpose as a registered purpose is indeed an educational mission. As, you know, we popularly understand that. But I think the more important aspect of this is this rulemaking concerns who can circumvent. And the question really isn't whether or not the platform itself has an educational mission. Udemy is not looking to circumvent, is not providing courses. So, I mean, whether or not we sort out Udemy correctly or any of the other platforms correctly, I don't think it really answers the question is, who are we authorizing to circumvent?
Mr. England?
Yeah, I wanted to make a point similar to Mr. Taylor's last point, which is I'm just totally confused here about what the proponents want. I thought we heard Professor DeChurney say five minutes ago that this exemption would not apply to Udemy. It would apply to the content creators on Udemy, of which I believe there are 75,000 or so. And so in the case of an example that used in his comments of Learn English with Movie Clips, was uploaded by a username as a head bashrati. Presumably that is somebody who Professor DeChurney would like to have be a beneficiary of this definition, but no reason to think that he's got any registrations of any states. So I really having a hard time reconciling his description of the definition within the words of the definition with what he said about Udemy.
Mr. Ayers, your thoughts?
Thank you. Just adding on a bit, to reinforce the idea that when these documents are filled out and referring back to a comment that Professor DeChurney had made a little while ago, that these comments were, or these purposes had been stated and verified in government documents. And I would just caution the Copyright Office to be aware that many of these statements are not verified. There is nobody who is checking. You know, it may come up later. Certainly, there could be penalties for having falsely represented an organization in the appropriate context, but for the most part, these are representations that are made with little or no checking and certainly little or no verification. And I would also be cautious about relying on advertising statements on websites as to identifying specifically the purpose of an organization intending to drive profit. And also noting that, going back to the public documents, the public filings, that we've identified a number of instances where the filings, I think, you know, charitably stated are sometimes inconsistent as to what the purpose of the organization is. Sometimes it's stated very broadly. Sometimes it might be stated narrowly. Sometimes a mission may be represented in a state filing that is not reflected the same way in their advertising materials and so forth. So I think it's a bit of a swampy ground when it comes to looking at what's been filed in one document or another. And I really would suggest that if the Copyright Office were to go down this road, that would be very clear about what sort of filing would be appropriate.
Thank you. I'll give Professor DeChurney an opportunity to respond. But can you specifically also speak to the point, Mr. England's point about clarifying the class for whom who would be circumventing?
Yeah, no, exactly. That's what I was hoping to speak to. The other issues are all about fraud, and that can obviously appear anywhere, but I think it might be outside the scope of this. But, um, so in a way, I expect, this seems to me to function exactly the way the existing exemption works. So right now, there's an exemption for educators who are affiliated with teaching through an accredited nonprofit institution. So I teach at the University of Pennsylvania. That's how we've defined the class. The exemption applies to me because I'm teaching for that organization. But the way that we've defined the class is around the kind of organization for which I teach. And so this would be the same. So, you know, Udemy has faculty, has educators who teach for it. They allow educators to be on their platform. We define the kind of educators through their engagement with that platform, which again is very similar to the way we have thought about a traditional educator like me and the way that I am engaged with the university that I teach for.
Mr. Taylor, I'll give you an opportunity to respond, and then I'm going to turn to another topic.
Yeah, there's a radical difference between Professor DeChurney's association as a faculty member of a nonprofit accredited institution and what we see at Udemy, where anybody can offer anything, and there's no vetting process. And as we put in our opposition comments, Udemy completely disavows any responsibility for that content. So I think that it's very tenuous to suggest that it's just like Professor DeChurney serving as a faculty member at a nonprofit accredited educational university.
Thank you for those thoughts. Kind of pointing to that nonprofit aspect, turning to some of the fair use factors. The proposed exemption applies to educators and preparers at qualified educational entities, which include for-profit entities. In light of Warhol, can you In light of Warhol, can you address how the commercial purpose of the use impacts the first factor? And that's to Professor Dischurni.
Um, yes, so uh the um, again, going back, uh, we don't have as as many examples because um we found that um that educators uh who um are teaching outside of uh of accredited nonprofits are um are definitely um worried about um about creating material and trying to educate students uh in ways that are outside the law, but would certainly be more impactful and effective. Um, and so uh I teach courses um on the history of Hollywood. Uh, that's that is my MOOC. I use hundreds of examples of Hollywood clips. Um, they, uh, I've I've never received um any any notice actually or complaint about them. Um, uh, legal or 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 non-legal. Um, and uh, these are are certainly transformative uses where I am using um uh clips to analyze them, to understand um how they're used uh in as terms of storytelling or entertainment, to use them to kind of understand the transformation of history. Um, they are you appropriate amounts are used. Um, I never use more than than um is is appropriate. Um, I engage and students to and invite students to to comment um on them. And um, and and certainly they're they're not, e- even if they happen to be entertaining at the same time, um, the primary uh purpose is, I mean, is is certainly transformative in education.
Um, thank you. And you're saying the primary purpose outweighs the commercial purpose. Is that what you're getting at?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, yes, if if there's a commercial uh market out there for for short clips, and we actually haven't really seen that.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Um, your response?
Um, I think that basically what Warhol helps us to understand is that under the first factor, when the when the alleged infringing work um is at issue, is we're really looking at the same commercial purpose. And um to the extent that we have examples here, which we have very few, if not, but only one. The example that we're provided here is is that this person is using the intrinsic um value of entertaining works um for the purposes of of his work. And so he really is not um engaging um in something that is truly transformative, um, but really um how can I say this, is really um relying on the intrinsic value of entertaining works to build a business. And to that extent, I just don't think fair use allows um one, even an educator, educating creator to rip off other creators for that purpose.
Mr. England, I know your comments specifically reference um the Warhol decision in applying um the first fair use factor. Can you speak to or respond to this Professor Dischurni's comment?
Yeah, so I think there are two main lessons to take from Warhol. One, that uh you need uh a transformative purpose or a justification. And uh second, that uh commercial purpose matters and is to be balanced against uh the perceived transformativeness of a use. And I think neither of those uh considerations supports the breadth of the exemption that's being sought here. First, with respect to purpose, uh, the proposed regulatory language is broader than the current MOOC exemption in the sense that it covers not only criticism and comment, but also illustration and explanation. And uh, I think some of the examples in Professor Dischurni's comments talk about use of movies to, you know, for their informational content, uh, to to show things that are showing the mood. Uh, that is not a transformative purpose uh uh for for using a movie. Uh, and uh, when you look at the full range of courses on a platform like uh Udemy, uh, things like Learn to Use the Mystery of Fairy Witchcraft Shamanism Today, uh, another course I observed. It uh really stretches the bounds of education. So you can't uh uh think about this through the same lens as you would a typical accredited college or university education. With respect to commerciality, uh, uh, obviously, the commercial platforms have a commercial purpose. On a platform like Udemy, the individual content creators have a commercial purpose. Uh, and a lot of the users have a commercial purpose. Uh, according to Demi's last annual report, fifty-eight percent of its uh twenty-twenty-three revenues came from uh uh business subscribers to the platform. Uh, so uh, you 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 take into account a purpose that's uh a lot less transformational than uh typical accredited university teaching and the course that Professor Dischurni provides and described a moment ago. Consider also the uh commercial nature of the activity all around, uh, which Warhol has reminded us matters. And uh, it just doesn't fare well under the first fair use factor.
Uh, Professor Dischurni, your response? And can you also, when you respond, speak to the expansion to illustration and explanation?
Uh, yes. Uh, so first, um, I just want to um talk about who the non-traditional learners might be. Uh, so sometimes it's students who don't have access to traditional accredited nonprofits. Sometimes it's students who um are struggling in their um accredited nonprofits and are looking for outside um forms of of tutoring um or or kind of uh, you know, shorter form um uh support. Uh, sometimes it's um really a kind of growing, massively growing um market for education. Uh, one that we serve as well at at accredited nonprofits, uh, which are um, you know, uh, working professionals who are hoping to advance their careers as um as as the job market changes, as jobs become obsolete. Um, and need to continually learning throughout their their careers and throughout their lives. Um, the argument we've been making is one um of equity, uh, that there is an exemption for learners who have access to accredited nonprofits. And uh, and for all the reasons that 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 exemption exists and uh and creates a high-quality um educational environment for um the people who are privileged to act to have access to it. This, we would, we like that extended, we're hoping that can be extended to um to non-traditional learners who don't have access. Um, uh, so one example that we gave in the um in in our comment um uh from Udemy, um, Learning English with with Movie Clips, um, doesn't use movie clips. Um, we've actually talked about language learning in in previous rulemakings. Um, and um, and and all the details um about speech and facial expression, micro expression um that you get from high-quality um clips that you can't get certainly from a still image um and and even from a a poor image. Um, and so that would be one example where um where illustration um is 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 relevant. But that's also a a form of close reading, even as it performs as 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 illustration. I mean, they're often, we'll go together, or maybe always go together.
Thank you for that. Um, and sort of on that, what evidence do you have that for-profit entities are more accessible than nonprofit entities to these non-traditional learners?
Um, so Coursera offers open um online courses, sometimes taught by um educational entities, sometimes not. Some are offered by Google and other companies. Um, many of those courses are free and open to anyone. Um, some uh parts of the course are free and open to anyone. Um, there are, of course, uh, elements of accredited nonprofits that are free and open. We have lectures at our university that are always free and open to the public. But um, the traditional um courses uh and degrees um are very, very expensive. Uh, and so anything that's, we know for a fact, anything that's free and open to the public reaches, uh, you know, can reach a much broader audience. Um, our own courses um that are open and free have had more than fifteen million enrollments. Um, and also, uh, yeah, to free, free and open. Uh, so anyone with a with a computer um and uh email address can take a course at EdX or Coursera, which certainly makes them, um, you know, much, which certainly increases access.
Thank you. So as we think about sort of the bounds of this um of this proposed exemption, um, there is a thought that maybe um there could be room for nonprofit unaccredited institutions. Um, is the fair use analysis, or would it be different for nonprofit unaccredited, unaccredited educational entities? Um, and in your responses, can you speak to the third and second factor as well? Um, specifically opponents, um, is there any room for nonprofit unaccredited educational entities? And um, that would be um, uh.
You mean, is there room for for-profit unaccredited?
No, I'm I'm specifically talking about um not um like, say, the exemption only applied to nonprofit unaccredited um entities. Um, is there room for that? Or or would the fair use analysis be different? Maybe we could start with Mr. Taylor.
Yeah, thank you. I think that, you know, again, we're talking about hypotheticals here, and uh fair use really depends on on uh fact determination based on the specifics. So, I mean, is it possible that a a nonprofit educational institution that's not accredited? Or maybe is or is not, I'm not sure, don't want to fight your hypothetical. Um, could it um be fair use? Yes. But more importantly, if that's the case, or if you were thinking about that, there are not any examples in this rulemaking of of that situation. And we certainly don't get to test whether or not um fair use actually exists in those examples. So um, back to the question of of Professor Dischurni's equity argument, this rulemaking, we can't just say because other educational institutions have these exemptions, um, we therefore um deserve it too. I mean, similarities um to other educational exemption is just not enough. There has to be a record on which um to make the determination that the underlying activity is indeed not infringing. And you don't have it um for what they propose, and you don't have it for your hypothetical either.
Mr. England?
So I agree with what uh Mr. Taylor just said, and to uh elaborate a little bit, uh, you focused on the unaccredited nonprofit, I think, under the first factor. Uh, accreditation uh provides some assurance of uh uh a truly educational process. And I think merely being nonprofit doesn't uh uh assure you that uh uh there's really an educational motivation here as opposed to some other uh motivation uh that just doesn't include making money. Uh, you guys specifically about uh the uh the the other factors and uh uh there, I think, uh, you know, second and third uh uh, it it was impossible to judge in the abstract. Uh, but uh, uh, you know, the fourth factor, if somebody is not accredited and maybe is uh offering the uh uh content for a minimally educational purpose, the 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 fact-specific fair use analysis does not necessarily uh lean toward fair use.
Thank you, Mr. England. Um, Professor Dischurni, can you provide any examples um of nonprofit unaccredited, unaccredited entities that may be um able to use this proposed exemption?
Yes, uh, it's actually interesting, again, to go back to the Coursera example. So Coursera is a platform that open, that that allows for open education. Um, there are courses on there by accredited nonprofits, Penn, Stanford, um, hundreds of other universities. Um, there are also courses on there by um unaccredited nonprofits. Um, great course by the Museum of Modern Art on um on photography, the history of photography, on photography today. A huge community has developed around it. Uh, they use still photographs. There's tremendous amount of analysis of still photographs. Um, uh, there are also, though, um, for-profit um unaccredited organizations, which uh which also 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 offer courses through uh Coursera. One of them is is Google. Um, and uh, Google um offers accreditation, its own form of certificates through that. And uh, and now says that those courses are as valuable when hiring for Google as um as degrees that are that are uh that you get from accredited um nonprofits. So, all 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 of these cases exist in the same platform, in the same way, um, and and can educate students. Obviously, um, an exemption that is expanded to um to unaccredited nonprofits is 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 better than one that doesn't. Um, but there are also really um valuable cases of uh of of for-profit unaccredited um organizations offering very, very uh important education um through these platforms.
Thank you. Um, kind of one more clarifying question about the language of your exemption. Um, the accessibility of uh the information is sort of key to the registration or the um learner's registration and not to uh the term of the course. Can you describe why there's that difference? The current exemption for MOOCs has it keyed to the length of the actual course. Um, the registration seems to be a lot longer than um some.
Yeah, no, so we're, we are open to exactly the same uh limitations that exist in in the Teach Act that are expand extended to uh the MOOC exemption. So um, registration, technical protection, uh, measures, and and also uh limit to the register, to the um, to the length of the course.
Thank you. Kind of talking, um, we talked a little bit about adverse effects. Um, but I want to give Professor Dischurni another opportunity. Um, opponents state that there's no evidence for the assertion that students are being left behind or that any educational harms are being caused by the limitations in the current exemption. Do you have any measurable evidence that online learning has been or will continue to um be hampered by the current prohibition?
Um, so the the way that it's hampered is that um both the quality and the range of educational offerings at accredited nonprofits continues to improve and expand while the uh educational offerings at um at unaccredited um uh platforms um continues to to shrink. Um, uh, it's not, they're not, by not being able to take advantage of um of all the, both the the tools and and range of topics that can be covered um as a result of the the MOOC exemption. Um, I was really surprised this time to find how many of the uh of the of the organizations we approached um didn't want to um join as a as a petitioner because they were afraid of exposing themselves to some kind of legal risk. And how many have actively um reduced the ways that they are, that they are teaching? Um, the methods they use to teach because of of the the um the kind of environment that's been created by the DMCA and the and the exemption process.
Can you provide a number of um even if they are, don't want to disclose their actual names? Like, how many organizations are you talking about?
Yeah, I mean, dozens that we've approached.
Uh, thank you. So I want to turn to alternatives regarding whether eligible users may access the software through alternate channels that don't require circumvention. I'm wondering if the proponents can speak to any alternatives um that could be useful to the proposed class.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that question?
Uh, I I wanted to talk about alternatives in a number of the uh comments, um, the opponents mentioned that there were alternatives that um circumvention is not necessary for this proposed class. I'm wondering if the proponents can speak to that. Mr. Taylor, Mr. Ayers, Mr. England?
I think the confusion is you're saying proponents and you meant opponents. Sorry, I I do that. I do that all the times. Um, I, since I've opened my mouth, I'll go ahead and finish the thought. Um, the, I, we've always contended that screen capture is a um is a very reliable um method of an alternative to circumvention. We have submitted in this um proceeding a example of screen capture from um one of the courses or that would relate to the course um, Learn English um Through Films. Um, Professor Dischurni, of course, has his uh um instructive um background on the quality of screen capture. But we we have at least established in this proceeding that in most instances where uh um where um high-quality images is not necessary, then the um screen capture would be sufficient. And we think that even in the example here, screen capture was more than sufficient.
Mr. Ayers, you indicated that you had a um demonstration or technology that you'd like to do to demonstrate. Does that relate to screen capture?
Uh, yeah, for the, yes, for the uh A C S L A and DVD C C A filing that was relating to screen capture. So, uh, I don't think we're prepared to uh offer that today, not uh assuming it would be uh needed, but I I would note that uh as uh needed, but I I would note that uh as to reinforce what David has mentioned that um uh screen captured has been, screen capture has been shown to be entirely adequate. Uh, the quality is actually very good, uh especially in the, you know, for the learners who are uh reviewing the lesson on a small screen device such as a tablet, a laptop, a a phone, uh and not in an expensive uh home theater uh arrangement. I would also notice that the uh examples provided by uh the proponents have also noted that there are examples of uh cooperative efforts between these platforms and educators and the uh content owners themselves. Uh in, for instance, a partner partnership between Khan Academy and Pixar uh that shows that not not only was uh uh circumvention not necessary, not even screen capture was necessary because there was the availability of working directly with uh the content owner uh in a a very uh amicable relationship.
Mr. England.
I agree with what uh Mr. Taylor and Mr. Ayers just had to say, and will uh also add that uh copyright owners typically have uh uh clip licensing programs and uh uh commercial entities who want to obtain the right to use movie clips take advantage of those routinely.
Professor DeShirney, can you speak to any of that? Um, and also, can you respond to maybe, do you have any data regarding the types of devices used to access online courses um and whether um is clip is clip quality not affected by the type of devices used to access these courses if they're non-traditional?
Uh, yeah, so first I will say Pixar is a kind of example that that also proves uh that they, you know, the exception that proves the rule. Um like one of the few courses we have to find is one in which there is um is is there's a direct uh licensing relationship um because fair use isn't available to um to non-traditional platforms. Um, in turn, again, it's an equity argument, and so uh we've talked for many, many times about um screen capture and the available streaming libraries and why they're insufficient. Um, the quality of screen capture, um drop frames, pixelation, others, um and the clip libraries are very, very narrow and and um really um diminish the range of of teaching opportunities. Um, that's been true uh for accredited nonprofits, and it's equally true for um for unaccredited organizations. Um, interestingly, um one, uh, the the um, the uh expansion of um of broadband by the FCC, NTIA is often tied to discussions about equity in education. Um and uh and it we we know that students who don't have access to fast connections and downloadable content um really have um trouble accessing education and their educational experience, it can be reduced. Um, so one of the best practices um when creating courses is to allow for um for downloadable content so that um uh it can be um so that the the quality of of clips um, you know, can can be high.
And any um data on the types of devices used?
Yeah, so the vast majority um of learners accessing online education are using mobile devices. Uh, we can provide that that number later. I don't have the exact uh information.
Thank you. And are you aware of any um educators or preparers of online learning materials that are currently using screen capture technology for course materials?
Yeah.
Thank you. Um in your reply comments, um you talk about the fact that there is no meaningful market for licensing short clips, um noting that services like Swank or Canopy are not accessible to every educational institution. Can you speak to the joint creators assertion that there are clips available through Fandingo Movie Clips website and Movie Clips YouTube channel? Uh, do you have any evidence that these options aren't sufficient for educators or preparers at uh qualified educational entities?
Um, yes, so um I I know from my own experience that these are very, very limited libraries. I know from my department experience. Um, we have students who who prepare clips because um uh even though um Canopy has a great um system for making clips, um the the available libraries are are very narrow. Um, just last month, I had to give several lectures on Cuban cinema. Uh, I can only find two um his uh films from uh the Cuban Revolutionary Period that are available streaming in any way at all. Uh, the the vast majority are not, um, you know, are just not available. And so I had to search for um for other other means of of accessing.
Thank you. Do any of the opponents, um would you like to speak to the available availability or marketplace for clips?
I'll just say that I can't speak to which motion pictures are available through uh through which platforms, but there are extensive libraries available through the services identified in our comments. Uh, I understand that the uh Copyright Clearance Center has a motion picture licensing program, and uh if you go to the websites of the studios, uh there are avenues for applying for licenses for clips. So uh uh there are definitely ways to access a lot of uh a lot of repertoire, uh like I can't cite specific titles.
We have looked at this in the past, um and the studio libraries uh make up a a very, very small percentage of the films that are taught within my university, less than than ten percent.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Taylor?
Yeah, I would just simply say that we have looked at this in the past, and when we looked at the availability of clip licensing, we were looking at the availability of clip licensing for nonprofit entities, and we were not really, we did not consider for-profit entities. And I think by and large, when we're looking at people who are looking to make an offering in the marketplace for profit, they indeed should be able to, or at least be required to first check to see if there is availability of a clip license. Um, and there shouldn't be a blanket um excuse for not looking for that license.
Thank you so much. Um uh, Mr. Shannon, do you have any um questions that you'd like to ask the proponents or the proponent and opponents?
Uh, sorry about that. Embarrassing. Um, yes, I do. Um I would like to start with uh given the near constant use of the internet in post-COVID American and and post-COVID America, would uh how would broadening this exemption affect digital equity concerns? Uh, I believe both sides have spoken to this already. If if we could get uh more contextual on that, that'd be great. That's a question for both sides, uh ideally.
Yeah, um, there was obviously a a huge um growth in um in the use of online um tools, platforms, content, um starting in in immediately as the as as lockdowns began. Um, those numbers have decreased a little bit, but actually uh for the last fourteen years, their um online education year over year has grown um uh has grown significantly. Even as uh as as uh as as numbers of students in traditional um learning environments actually decreased. Uh, so yeah, that those numbers have have continued to expand. Um, just looking uh at our own um uh, you know, at at Penn's um uh online offerings, um seven years ago, we had one online degree. Um, we now have eighteen uh fully online degrees uh and and more in the pipeline. Um, uh, three thousand, we have three thousand fully online uh students who are who are learning at our university. Um, so uh, you you know, even the even the market for um traditional accredited nonprofits has has grown dramatically uh in the last um in the last decade.
Um, I'll, opponents, please hop in. Uh, I will wrap back around in a moment, if that's all right.
Steve, do you want to go first?
Copy too. Yeah, so I think uh this exemption doesn't really move the needle one way or the other much on digital equity. Yeah, like Professor D'Churney said, there is a wealth of uh online uh education that is being uh uh offered uh by uh uh nonprofit educated educational institutions, uh accredited institutions. Uh, it uh not clear how much of that actually relies on motion pictures that have been accessed uh through circumvention TPMs, but uh that that option is available for the providers of those courses, and uh the proponents, the proponents here have just not uh made a showing that uh opening up all motion pictures to uh circumvention by for-profit entities uh is going to uh uh produce more uh better uh different kinds of educational offerings that that are already available or could be provided by uh nonprofit accredited organizations.
Hi, um, this is David Taylor. Um yeah, I think digital equity just brings us back to many past proceedings where we have looked at very well-intentioned purposes, um including in the last one where we had COVID um and and the registrar spent some time addressing the fact that this rulemaking simply cannot say that for the purposes of any one reason that it's going to deviate from the statutory mandate. And if you look back at the twelve oh one study, we clearly look and see that um broad categorical exemptions, even for the best purposes, are not permitted under this rulemaking. So I don't think that um for proponents of digital equity that um they're going to be able to find relief in the twelve oh one rulemaking, um no matter how many of us agree with those purposes.
Um, I'll that question, uh follow-up for uh Stephen Edmund. Um Mr. Edmund, uh what about tutors for these court for courses, right? You have a um a course, a film studies course taught at a university. How do tutors uh for-profit tutors online work it to like help facilitate or support students in those courses? Um, yeah.
Uh, assuming that was me you're addressing, uh uh yeah, I I don't have a lot of visibility into uh that world, but uh uh when I hear the word tutor, I picture individualized uh uh interactions, uh not uh free recorded uh course material developed by circumventing the TPMs on motion pictures. So uh uh tutoring just doesn't uh seem very relevant here.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Ayers?
Uh, thank you. Yeah, just to to build on that point a little bit, I think also in the in the context of tutoring, you're looking at uh uh individuals or teams of individuals that are making use of the course materials already prepared uh and are not necessarily generating uh a uh a set of essentially a new course uh that requires new materials. So I I I think I think the the case of a tutor i- is is a is a step removed from uh from what we're looking at here.
Uh, I'm gonna go, well, uh, Mr. Taylor and then Mr. at DeChurney, I'm sorry about that. Uh, I'll allow you to answer all of this.
Yeah, I I just to, I guess, be maybe give you what you're looking for a little bit more is is that I think traditional copyright analysis would say that a one-on-one experience is probably the minimus if it's truly one-on-one, but what we are talking about here is massive open online courses. Um, so I don't think that you, I think that you have the full weight of the copyright law um for these kinds of exemptions that we're looking at here.
Uh, thank you.
Yeah. Um, no, very interesting that you bring up uh tutoring because that's been one of the places of uh of the most innovation over the last um year and a half. Um, first Khan Academy uh released um uh an online tutor, an AI online tutor um uh using ChatGPT um by having a kind of set um database that it works with. Um, it's been really effective at um massively scaling the kinds of one-on-one tutoring that are available um for um learners in in online environments. Um, I think it's Georgia Tech where their online um TA, their their virtual TA uh actually won a a teaching award uh recently. Um, uh, so Coursera also has one, um, a platform we talked about in the last rulemaking, whose uh former CEO uh was a petition co-petitioner, is called Osmosis. Um, Osmosis started off as part of um Khan Academy, as part of Khan Academy uh to help with medical and science education. It then spun off, interestingly, as as a for-profit site that's used by medical students to um to help them um learn outside of classroom uh uh experiences, uh but it's also now incorporated into the traditional learning environments of many medical schools. Um, so these, these are kinds of uh platforms um and learning environments that exist across a a range of uses. Um, but the uh the ability to provide individualized tutoring um and and uh education that's really tailored towards individuals uh has just skyrocketed and in the last year and a half.
Thank you. Um can you explain uh no, I'll I'll pause that. Um, how much does the exemption uh move or limit, how much would this exemption remove burden on uh small uh small organizations? I know the uh Pixar example was given. Um, how much access would a smaller organization uh have uh to Pixar? Say Khan Academy started up later on, would Khan Academy be able to uh make that licensing agreement uh with Pixar? Uh, for both proponents and opponents, I would like both sides of this, please. Uh, Mr. DeChurney, if you would like to start, that'd be great.
Yeah, from our experience talking to um legal teams at small uh educational um entities, um they are very, very, there's a, there's a very um high uh fear of of legal risk. And uh and and even uh and and a fair use in particular. Uh, I don't know how how much access um a small entity would have uh to Pixar. Um, Khan Academy is not a a small um entity. Um, they know they're they're well-funded by the by the Gates Foundation and other organizations um and have have dramatically uh moved the needle in terms of education, um, you know, globally. Um, so they are uh they're a very, very important um player. Um, but I but I but I assume it's going to be much more difficult for a small organization, and um you know, I know that I can tell you the legal fear and exposure really um drives um and and limits their educational offerings. That's what we've heard over and over again for the past um during this this rulemaking.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Ayers?
Uh, thank you. Just uh I I I, yeah, I think it's um, it it would be disingenuous to to try to claim that that, you know, every single small entity would have the same access to uh, you know, to very large studios, and so I I I don't think we can make that claim here. Uh, I would note, though, that that it's exactly this sort of program uh that would seem to pioneer uh the ability of uh having these direct relationships, and certainly as the market evolves, uh that will uh improve conditions for not only for larger entities, but make them also available to smaller entities as well. Uh, so I I think it is a problem, or it is an issue that uh the the market will uh address uh as uh these relationships are are uh increase and are are refined. Uh, and so you will see a benefit that will uh be enjoyed by uh smaller entities as well, even if, even if the the early days are uh are are not as uh they're not uh as accessible.
Uh, Mr. England, uh I hope I pronounced that wrong.
Yes, that that's good. So uh I'll I'll just add that uh this is all speculation, right? Professor D'Churney doesn't know what the nature of the discussions was between uh Khan Academy and Pixar. I wasn't involved in those discussions. Uh, so we're all just speculating about the nature of those discussions, and the office shouldn't base its decisions here on speculation about private deals. Uh, and in general, I've found that copyright owners uh will entertain uh uh business proposals that uh uh seem interesting, and sometimes they come from large parties, sometimes they come from small parties, and they make rational business decisions. That's why uh uh the sort of thing that the copyright framework was designed to create by giving copyright owners uh market opportunities to uh exploit their works in that uh ways that are mutually beneficial.
Thank you. Um, when discussing the licensing opportunities, there was extinction made between um licensing's opportu- licensing's licensing opportunities for for-profit and licensing opportunities for accredited non-for-profit during the last during the last hearing. It was mentioned that there was a less than 10% availability on licensing platforms during the last, during the last hearing and earlier today. Do you know the amount, what it like roughly the amount of availability today? And this is for Professor Degeneres and opponents. How much access do you have, Professor Degeneres or Peters?
So I'm very, very fortunate to teach in at a well-endowed university where we have amazing access through our library to a very wide range of information and material and resources. It's actually still a significant burden for us to be able to afford the licenses, even for the films that we want to teach in classes. It's something we struggle with and have a limited budget that we that that impacts our that impacts our curriculum and our and our courses. So and I know for a fact that that, that, you know, that that less, less fortunate faculty have a much, much more serious problem. And so we're just asking that and for equity that that kind of burden that we already have isn't, doesn't become an even larger burden on on educators of non-traditional students, teaching through unaccredited platforms.
Mr. England.
I think it's important to point out that the response that Professor DeChurney just gave was an economic response. Copyright typically does not consider the price to be a reason to grant exemptions or to recognize a particular use as fair use. And to the contrary, words have said things like it's commercial to try to require a work without paying the customary price. And so to the extent this is an issue about economics and not wanting to pay the customary price, that is not a reason to grant this exemption.
Right. So I, I think I asked the question wrong. The question is the about availability. So if if the customary price, if there's not a license for the film, what is the solution for for-profit institutions in this in this situation that not that not-for-profit accredited institutions don't necessarily have to concern themselves with as much?
So so what do for-profit entities do if they can't get a license is what you're asking?
Yes, and I was trying to, well, yes, both parties would be correctly.
I guess the easy answer to that question is they do the same thing that for-profit entities do all the time when they want to use copyrighted works. They either negotiate a deal or they design their products in ways that don't require a use that implicates copyright rights. But in our comments, we identified a number of sources of clips that I all have broad catalogs. And this, I understand, it'd be available to a for-profit educational entity. So I think that no reason for you to assume that for-profit educational entities could not get licensed here in commercial markets.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor.
Yeah, I, I, I think, again, that they have the benefit of of alternatives to circumvention, which is, I mean, if they really want to make use of a clip that's not licensed, well, they can use screen capture and the screen capture is readily available to them. And I don't see an outcry from entities that we are hypothetically discussing showing up at the copyright office saying that they need an exemption. And as far as the availability for Mr. DeChurney and classroom purposes and other educational purposes, this rulemaking has already been extremely responsive to making exemptions available for specific purposes where they have demonstrated the underlying activity was not infringing. And that's the question that remains here that the proponents simply have not been able to demonstrate.
Thank you. Mr. Ayers.
But just reinforcing David's comments with a tiny addition. Screen capture is absolutely available to those entities, profit, nonprofit, accredited, unaccredited. And whether they are experiencing budget constraints or not, if the if if it's a fair use, they are, they have those tools available to utilize. And I would, I would note that in this proceeding, we've had a distinct lack of explanation as to why that's not sufficient. We don't have any examples really of of why we have some somewhat vague complaints of stuttering and frame dropping on occasion. We also have some comments about the that somehow the digital divide is applicable here as well, that somehow being able to download a ripped copy is better than being able to download a screen captured copy. And so I don't think that actually applies either. So screen capture is is a valid and viable option that is available to all comers. And we haven't seen a reason why presented why that is insufficient.
Could I actually explain why why the screen capture? Why that's not a valid argument? The you say to that screen ripping or that ripping, the not the lack of a loss of quality when ripping versus screen potential loss of quality when ripping, when screen capturing is not a valid argument. Can you explain why?
I'm so just to make sure I'm on the same track here. So it's, what I'm saying is that, or you, the question you had originally asked was what alternatives are available to those who are not able to obtain a license? And it's been mentioned that screen capture is is an alternative that, assuming the use is fair to begin with, the the license is not necessary. And putting aside completely whether the whether the the actual use in question is a fair use. Screen capture has been, you know, as as we provided in our in our filings and has been explored in multiple sessions, multiple rounds of this proceeding. In the past, screens capture is very viable. It provides a completely useful end product for the educator to use and doesn't require circumvention. It uses tools that are readily available and provides a product that is is at least as useful as the the original version ripped from the physical media. And so we've not seen any time spent in this proceeding exploring why that's insufficient in, you know, for the cases that we've, we've talked about here. In fact, the the biggest reason is, the biggest example that we've seen is that of presenting clips that correspond to language lessons. And to the extent you're showing a a use of a of a particular phrase in a familiar setting, in a familiar context, that is just as easily done and just as effectively done using screen capture as it is if you compare it to using it from a ripped copy of a physical, a physical disc, whether it's a DVD or a Blu-ray disc. And I hope I hope I've addressed your.
Yeah, it sounds to reiterate back, it sounds like what you're saying. For you use the example of language learning. In the case of language learning, loss of quality or like or pausing that can potentially occur through screen capturing is not a concern because there is still the equal quality of education gained?
I would say that it's at least at least sufficient quality to do the job. One, one might question, I think reasonably, whether the use of the clip is is actually a fair use in that particular circumstance. Or is it used as essentially a gimmick to make the language lesson more attractive to a consumer? Come take my language lessons, you can watch movie clips. You know, so there's, there's that question to to, you know, putting aside that question. But just as far as the the basic utilitarianism, the basic utility, I'm sorry, of the of the screen capture clip, it provides just as much utility as in in most contexts as the ripped copy from from a commercial physical medium.
Thank you. That's what I was asking. Sorry if I wasn't here enough.
Thank you.
Mr. Taylor.
Actually, we're going to wrap up and Mr. Taylor, we can, you can include those in your final statements. We're going to let everyone have final statements and we're going to start with the opponents. So Mr. Taylor, you can start and we'll let Professor DeChurney have the last word.
All right. Thank you. I think that just to respond on the last note is is that screen capture in this proceeding and past proceedings, shall I say, has been found to not be sufficient sometimes when needs for high-quality images or even sound were warranted based on the use. But in each one of those determinations, we had a solid record where we had proponents and multiple examples of evidence of the non-infringing activity and an explanation with those examples of how screen capture fell short and what was specifically the need that was was sought by the act of circumvention. Here we have no record. The only record of use that we have is the one of learn English through films. And the underlying activity cannot be said to be clearly non-infringing. The for-profit motive, the way it was marketed, every aspect of this example says that this is a non-infringing use. And in the absence of more examples or any successful example, there's no basis for the copyright office to recommend a class or exemption in this case.
Mr. England.
So when the office created the current MOOC exemption in 2015, that went through a very exhaustive process on a record much more robust than this one and carefully tailored exemption that that remains more or less what's in effect. This is the third time that has heard proposals from Professor DeChurney to expand the exemption to for-profit unaccredited opportunities. And the the record just doesn't look any different, except maybe that's a little smaller and thinner. Nothing has changed in the last nine years, except that there are more for-profit courses that are available. But the copyright analysis is the same. The fair use analysis, most importantly, is still still the same. You've still got commercial entities that are engaged in the activity. And important to remember, as I said at the outset, that you it's a mistake or at least an incomplete vision of what we're talking about here to assume that all of these courses are like Professor DeChurney's MOOC. It, we're talking about a lot of on-demand content that might be informational, kind of entertaining. A lot of topics that aren't being taught in accredited schools offered up on platforms that for all practical purposes are a lot like YouTube and TikTok. And you start analyzing that kind of content through the usual fair use lens. And it just doesn't seem like a fair use for all the reasons that the office has held three times previously. And as we've been exploring the last few minutes of this panel, there are other alternatives. Screen capture has been explored at length in prior proceedings, not a major feature of this proceeding, mostly an indication of how thin the record is in this proceeding. As well as licensing programs. Therefore, the office should deny the exemption for the same reason has said three times before.
Thank you. Mr. Ayers, your final thoughts?
Sure. First of all, thank you for having us all today. Just to essentially reiterate points you've you've heard, the this, these topics have been discussed and negotiated multiple times in the past. We're the what we're doing now is focusing a little bit more on where the discussion is since the exemption's already been created. We've not, as has been stated, we've, we've not seen a, an increase in the evidentiary submissions for to support the points that are being asked here in the expansion of the proposed expansion of the exemption. And in fact, has been noted that the evidentiary showing is a little thinner than it has been in the past. So we're, we're focusing down a little bit more, not really hearing anything new. And, you know, not, not to knock anybody who is engaged in in very worthwhile endeavors. I think we're, we're the copyright office is at the limit of what it can do in this circumstance, given the the rather slim evidentiary record.
Thank you. Professor DeChurney.
Um, yeah, thank you. No, thank you so much for for all the time thinking through this with us. I mean, it's a really exciting time to be an educator. There are new tools out there. We're able to scale the kinds of education we provide, you know, beyond things we'd ever imagined when I started teaching. It's shocking for me still to say that I've had 80,000 learners who are able to access my course that in the past I could only teach to 100 students a year. What we keep hearing from the from the from the opponents is is that non-traditional students just shouldn't have access to the same kinds, the same quality of education that 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 traditional students get at accredited nonprofit institutions. We've gone through the fair use analysis. We've gone through questions of of access of of screen capture. And for all the reasons that 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 we've that that you've granted an exemption for accredited nonprofits. I mean, I think that those same kinds of high-quality education, educational opportunities should be available to as broad a public as possible. They shouldn't be available to everyone. And so I think we've done a really great job this time. And I want to thank the student attorneys I've worked with at American University. And one of the great things about the exemption process is all this, the the law students I've worked with over the last 18 years on this. And I think they've, together, we've done a really great job of finding a way to narrow the class so that it only applies to 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 true educational institutions that are that are trying to offer a really high-quality product to as broad a public as possible and really democratizing American education. Really, one of the the great things I think that our country has offered. There's no other educational system like ours. I should just, yeah, I'll end there.
Thank you for everyone's thoughts. I will hand it back to Suzy Wilson.
Thank you, everyone. This was a very helpful discussion and we really appreciate everyone's participation and input today. We will now adjourn for approximately an hour until 2:30 PM Eastern Time today, when we will have the hearing for the next class, which is Class V on Computer Programs and Repair. Thank you so much.